Five, four, three, two, one. It is exactly seven o'clock. We will start the meeting. Call the meeting order if you call the hall please.
Mr. Cameron is absent?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Collier?
Here.
Mr. Beazel?
Here.
Mr. Peterman?
Here.
Everybody please rise and pledge the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Anything motion for approval of the minutes in the last meeting?
So move.
Second. We'll call that please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Beazel?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
All right. We are at the plant visitors communications. We're going to start out with the fun stuff. Fire department, come on, she failed it. Tell us what's going on.
All right. Mayor Haas, members of council, Mr. Gill, Streewall, and staff present as well as citizens at home. It's a great pleasure to stand before you tonight, gentlemen, and be able to make two promotions within our department. These gentlemen have worked hard, as does all of our department members, but I'm real pleased to be able to stand here tonight and promote two individuals to the positions of captain and lieutenant. So the first one I'll call up is Rick Darty. Give you a little history on Rick as he's coming up here. Rick started with our department in October of 99, so just past 20 years with our department. He was promoted to lieutenant in 2016 and took care of basically our grant writing procedure, and everybody knows the history that we've had with that, so kind of took over that and obviously did what all of our lieutenants do, and that's inspections, and did a good job with that. So we're promoting Rick tonight to captain. He'll oversee shift two, be helmet number 654, as well as radio number, and he's going to take over our vehicle maintenance program with retirement Captain Amen. We need somebody to head that program up, so Rick's graciously accepted to do that through me, and again, we'll continue with some other tasks, but will primarily be responsible for our vehicle maintenance program. So with that being said, Teresa? Could you come up there too? I would like for you to badge pin.
You signed on for that, didn't you?
Congratulations. And there you go. So with that, we'll get a few pictures here with Mark when we're done. Need a little break. I'd like to change things up. There it is. So congratulations again. Rick will be the captain on shift two. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. Congrats.
Why don't you introduce your family? Obviously, all my Teresa's here with me and my middle daughter Kayla. My oldest daughter is a dance, she dances five degrees. My oldest daughter actually just graduated from AKA Saturday. Got her master's degree, which is awesome. And then my son, who is the oldest, is here, he's actively doing marines court, he's in Quantico right now.
Oh wow.
Want to thank everybody on council, thank the mayor, and thank Ron for trusting me and sending me in. I'll do a good job.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, next Kyle. Kyle's coming forward. Kyle Kaufman was hired by the department in October, or excuse me, August of 2011, so the last eight years has been with us, been a firefighter, paramedic, and has done a great job with that particular position. He'll go to shift one as a lieutenant, which happens to be the shift that's on today with Captain Luff. And basically, he'll take over that inspection process, as I mentioned, all lieutenants are in charge of that, and again, it's going to also take over the grant writing procedures. So Rick, I know will pass along, and has already done some of that, pass along some information to Kyle, because we want to keep that history going with Fort Thomas Fire Department and our grant procedure. So Kyle will be badge number 657, and again, as I said, be the lieutenant on shift one. We welcome him, he did a good job, and I know he'll do a good job as a lieutenant also, so. Nicole? Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Okay. Mr. Grayway, would you like to have a moment at the microphone and tell us what's happening with the development?
Thank you. I wanted to give you an update. As long as you have someone on the power point, I notice how to do that, that'd be great.
I am, I'm going to give you the clicker, so you can check those out if you'd like.
Can you make it closer?
Yeah.
Thank you.
There you go.
I have the clicker right here.
Okay.
What do I do?
Come here.
Have you clicked on it?
It's up and down, I'm going to go up and down there. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to give you an update. We've been together for a few months, but we've been seeing a lot of the design review board, and so you'll have a chance to see some of the things they've approved. The name you're familiar with?
Is that microphone on? They're having trouble hearing back there.
Is that on now?
Yeah.
Is that good? It doesn't amplify, but it's, the red dot's on.
Oh, the red dot shouldn't be on. If it's on, it's.
No, I mean the red.
Yep, it's on.
I'll just speak up.
There you go.
Is that good?
Everybody hear me back there?
Okay.
So, we selected one Highland for a couple reasons. The date, the actual address was available, no one had used it, and we wanted to incorporate your heritage. This is a city built on a big ridge on the Highland, and we like the simplicity of the name, because we can use it as a destination for the commercial space, as well as a place where people will be living. So it's going to incorporate the color palette as well of the city.
Or not.
Does it on?
So, okay, we're good. Go back. All right, we'll get this right. Here we go. So, okay, here we go. All right, excuse me. So here are the elevations of the project. The brick color has been selected and approved. The architecture of these big bays you can see that are sticking out, where all the living rooms of each of these units will have light on all three sides, with the floor-to-ceiling glass in the living room. You can see the storefront windows on the first floor. Again, the long promenade that extends from one end of the building to the other, to the iconic tower, which we are again recalling your history with the water tower. This will be also not only residence on the second and third floor, but a covered part of the commercial property that will be on the first level. So there'll be outdoor space to dine underneath the trellis, and then some shaded areas underneath the tower, and then to the Highland Street side. As you go down Highland, again, this will be landscaped, it won't be this stark, but you can see the architecture and how it steps down 10 feet to Woodland, and has lots of nice residential features that'll face Woodland with great, two units facing the street. You can see the hidden garage doors that we put facing the street, that'll be closed, and then the parking lot with, again, the same features as the front, so there is no backside of this building. It's all nice materials and architecture on all sides. Whoops. We're going to, again, use this. This, oh, messing things up here. Okay, so the tower, which is a more close-up, will have the name of the destination, and this will be lit with architectural lighting, so it'll be a nice soft element that will highlight the stone and make an announcement as you're driving up Highland, or as you're pulling down Fort Thomas Avenue, that this is a place, a special gathering place. The entrance to the Galleria will be signed for not just commercial users, for the people who'll be coming to visit the shops, but also to the residences that will use the same Galleria to get to the lobby for the residences. Why don't you just, I'm just giving you the key. Thank you, you got the touch. Each of the stores in the facility will be using this coordinated sign program, which is approved by the designer review board. There'll be uniform signs, people will be able to personalize it with their logo and their typography, but they'll be the same size, so they'll be very predominant when you drive down the street, you'll be able to see who's in this destination. And then, along the promenade, there'll be these flags that pedestrians will be able to enjoy as they're going between each of the six businesses on the first floor. Then, the parking lot will be signed with the same identity program, so people will know how to get to the lot, and again, we hope to have some kind of counter mechanism so you know how many spaces are available in the lot. So, there's two phases, as you know, and the yellow space is all the commercial space that you see, and then the blue is the two residential units on the first floor. So Debbie Buckley and I have been very much focused on the first phase. We've been meeting with people in Fort Thomas who want to expand their business, or people that want to have more modern commercial space. So we're going after those people first, because we think they understand the community the most and have the most commitment to its vitality. So we have 14 prospects, and we're working very hard to get two, maybe three of those signed before we start our residential sales, because it'll be very important for people to know that this is, you know, high-quality space on the first floor if they're going to be investing in a home on the second and third floor. And then, the brochure you have in front of you is being used by Cushman Wakefield to recruit a restaurant on the second phase, and also more retail. So we have two people on the team. One is a longtime resident of Fort Thomas, Michelle's here, Klingenberg. She specializes in office condos. And then her partner, Terry Omnis, is a retail restaurant specialist. He helped 3C DC with Line Street, the tenants in the 580 building. So he's going to put the word out, he just was at ICSC convention this past week, to try to find out who he can get to come to this great location that would like to open a restaurant, family-style, sit-down restaurant. And then also, Michelle will be looking for more office users on the second floor. So, the marketing campaign starts in earnest the first of the year. We're going to hit it really hard for six months and see what turns up. In the meantime, we're going to be trying to nail down the local people first, before we offer this to the world. So, besides the commercial endeavor, we have this high-quality residential product that will be new to Fort Thomas. One-level flats, high-quality finishes, called the Residences at One Highland. And you've seen these plans before, it'll have a garage for all the residents underneath. There will be access from Woodland. The first floor will have the commercial space, as well as two units facing Woodland. The second floor will have nine units, and then the top floor will just have the units on Fort Thomas Avenue, and the back, not on Woodland, so we can keep the height down. So those, the marketing of those will start in April, again, once we will be able to announce some tenants first. We really want to have that, that progress going, so people are confident that this is a place they want to live, with the kind of exciting amenities that are just at their fingertips. Again, you can see the outline of the building that was approved, that's dashed, and it's in that rendering that you've seen, and then the BB&amp;T gray outline. We decided to keep the gray building, the gray outline, as you see, BB&amp;T right now. Our goal is to promote this site as far and wide as we can, and we're going to give ourselves six months, seven months, because at the end of that time period, the garage will be done, the first floor will be done, we're doing two levels of concrete. So it's going to take a lot of time to build the garage, and do the deck for the garage, then do the deck for the first floor retail, it'll be concrete. So the whole concrete work won't be done until fall. So having a decision on phase two is important then, because we know we can start the second phase at the same time as the framing, wood framing for the condos, and have both phases done at the same time. So we're going to give ourselves six months, see what happens. If we're unsuccessful, and I hope we're not, but you know, we want to give ourselves flexibility. If we don't find a restaurant, then we have two banks that want to buy the BB&amp;T property. It's not our goal, we have the same vision as you do, with this, you know, great texture of these buildings that all knit into this great urban environment we're trying to create. So that's our goal, we're going to do our best, I think we've got the best team in town to do that, and Debbie's been a big help trying to, again, recruit people that already understand this community and believe in it. So to conclude, we're going. Got a bank lined up for the financing, we got the buildings torn down, habitat's finished with their foraging for all the things they could, and you can see some action again at the end of January. We'll start actually excavating towards the end of January, early February, and then we'll, won't stop until it's done. But we're really excited about this opportunity. We think we're going to be able to introduce an exciting new housing type in this part of Kentucky, and also have a brand-new commercial center that will not only be great for the people that sign up, but will draw other merchants, offices, that want to be in this downtown because of that critical mass. So, thanks again. Happy beer. Send you a drink. Any questions?
Thanks, Rick. Any questions? Anybody? I appreciate the update, that's awesome. Thank you so much, appreciate it. All right. We are still on the visitors' communications. Would anybody else like to address council for any reason? If so, step forward and state your name and address for the record.
My na, hello, am I on? My name is Melanie Powers. I live at 13 Pearson Street. I'm not here tonight, though, speaking individually. I'm speaking in my capacity as the president of the Pearson Street HOA. So if you will excuse me, I'd like to read from notes for efficiency and my old brain. So I'm coming, as I said, tonight to speak to you as president of the Pearson Street Homeowners Association. If you're not familiar with us, we're comprised of the six historic homes that line on the west side of Pearson Street in Tower Park. Since the approved and development that has happened at Alexander Circle, Pearson Street has borne without question the lion's share of the inconvenience of that. We have done so until particular events that happened in December and January with enthusiasm and patience. We approved of the Alexander Circle development, as well as, you know, awareness that we are going to have a lot of construction noise, trucks, et cetera, as you might imagine, six days a week, pretty much all day long. We are asking tonight for your collective, your vigorous, and your very focused attention, however, to what has become a very bad current situation for us, and we have tried everything that we have thought of, and achieved absolutely no resolution of any kind. The development, I would like to remind you, was not sought after by the HOA as an entity, nor individual manners in particular. What happened to us, and I know a couple of you are familiar with it, is that the Water District approached us very early on in the construction phase of the Alexander Circle, and needed our agreement to change water pipes that were both in and around the homes there on Pearson Street. They promised us that we would be very happy with the results, and that by allowing these changes, which we, the HOA, had to sign an agreement for, that our homes would be improved. We were promised, and I must emphasize that, promised minimal disturbance, not only to the homes, but that there would be no damage in any way to the historic homes or to the HOA common ground. Those were very, very false promises. What has actually happened was that JNT Excavating, which was subcontracted by the Water District, completed substandard and incompetent work, as found not by the homeowners, but by professional, well-known experts in both engineering and in that particular kind of construction. That incompetent work has led to water damage, serious water damage, in five of the six homes. As we speak now, I just had three calls before I left, from my neighbors, and add my home to it, because of the heavy rain that we're having, we have water in our basements. The sixth home that so far has not had any water damage, has been notified by the experts, both individual homeowners and that we collectively consulted, that he is not unlikely to have in the future water damage to the front of his homes, sorry, his home. The common grounds were left a muddy hole for months and months, despite repeated phone calls, some assistance from Ron Dill. We were ignored at every turn by both the Water District, JNT, and Jolly Plumbing. As I said, we have tried on numerous occasions to obtain restoration, settlement, and reimbursement of the damages to our property, both collectively as individual homeowners, and then as well as the HOA entity itself. After this serious injustice dealt to us, we now face thousands of dollars in repair work, attorney fees, storage unit fees, because five of the six of us can no longer store anything in our basements, and then other sort of expenses. This is wrong. No matter how you look at this, from whatever lighting, from whatever angle, it is wrong. The Pearson Street residents should not have to pay anything for the injustice that has been done to us. We are asking for your robust and your timely assistance with this really horrible situation. We have had meetings, we will have another one this Thursday, I invite anyone here to attend. The only idea that we have come up with outside of very litigious action, which we hope to avoid, at least in the extremis, is that perhaps some of the increased tax monies that are going to be coming into the coffers of the city from Alexander Circle could be used, or a fund set up to reimburse us for our losses. Three of the people of the six homes, myself included, are retired, one man almost retired. One of the six homes is a very young couple, just getting started. We do not have a lot of personal money to absorb this, particularly when it is not our fault. We have done nothing wrong. So we are open to suggestions. If you do not like the particular one, we have advanced to you tonight.
Thank you. Ron, do you have any background on this?
Well, we've had a lot of conversation, and we've been engaged with residents on Pearson Street, really throughout the latter part of the project. It is a Northern Kentucky Water District project. It was done as referenced by Ms. Powers, that was related to the Alexander Circle homes. As you all know, they took the water main from South Fort Thomas Avenue all the way back into the project. Previously, it was located behind the homes, and it is now located in front of their homes, which required new services into all of their residences, and I think that's where the issues came in. Again, she referenced a JNT construction, is that right?
JNT Excavating.
Excavating, was their prime contractor, and Jolly Plumbing did, I guess, the service work from the main into each of the individual homes. And I guess throughout that process, there were some delays that left openings inside yards, and allowed infiltration of water into basements, and some of those items remain unresolved, because of still experiencing some of the same issues. We've reached out to the Water District a number of times through this process, and I know there were insurance companies that were involved, and we had some conversations with them. The Water District, it's really their contractor, they let this contract for their contractor. We've just made them aware that we have residents that weren't pleased with the outcomes from their contractor's work in our city. My most recent conversation was last week, late last week, and the only information I got from them was that they are assuring that they are still open to communication with these residents about the issues related to their homes. But collectively, they didn't offer to, you know, meet with the city and the residents to, you know, try to have a conversation about resolving any issues that are outstanding. I know that there's been conversations between representatives of the insurance companies for the residents, and perhaps some of the attorneys representing them, and I don't know where the Water District stands in terms of getting past those issues. So we're continuing to advocate for our residents. I'm not certain that we have, you know, a position where we can control their subcontractors, but we're making them aware that there's still issues out there, as are the residents.
Apparently, there's been some acknowledgement of fault. I had a conversation with Ms. Powers earlier, and I believe JNT has tried, or made some settlement offers, you know, that were low-ball and not approaching what.
They were extremely low-ball. For instance, one resident submitted a claim, he's a little advanced of some of the rest of us, for $20,000. Sentinel Insurance, which is the insurance company for JNT, offered him $3,000.
And I have a little personal knowledge on her specific property, because I was a Realtor involved, and we, myself, we were all collectively amazed that the age of the house in the Old Stone Foundation, it was dry as a bone, and it was always dry as a bone, until this work took place, and so, I mean.
And now I have water literally flowing in my basement.
So the other resident that...
It was done, as referenced by Ms. Powers, that was related to the Alexander Circle homes. As you all know, they took the water main from South Fort Thomas Avenue all the way back into the project. Previously, it was located behind the homes, and it is now located in front of their homes, which required new services into all of their residences. And I think that's where the issues came in. Again, she referenced a JNT construction, is that right?
JNT Excavating.
Excavating was their prime contractor, and Jolly Plumbing did, I guess, the service work from the main into each of the individual homes. And I guess throughout that process, there were some delays that left openings inside yards and allowed infiltration of water into basements, and some of those items remain unresolved because of still experiencing some of the same issues. We've reached out to the Water District a number of times through this process, and I know there were insurance companies that were involved and we had some conversations with them. The Water District, it's really their contractor, they let this contract for their contractor. We've just made them aware that we have residents that weren't pleased with the outcomes from their contractor's work in our city. My most recent conversation was last week, late last week, and the only information I got from them was that they are assuring that they are still open to communication with these residents about the issues related to their homes. But collectively, they didn't offer to, you know, meet with the city and the residents to, you know, try to have a conversation about resolving any issues that are outstanding. I know that there's been conversations between representatives of the insurance companies for the residents and perhaps some of the attorneys representing them, and I don't know where the Water District stands in terms of getting past those issues. So, we're continuing to advocate for our residents. I'm not certain if we have, you know, a position where we can control their subcontractors, but we're making them aware that there's still issues out there, as are the residents.
Apparently, there's been some acknowledgement of fault. I had a conversation with Ms. Powers earlier, and I believe JNT has tried or made some settlement offers, you know, that were lowball and not approaching what-
They were extremely lowball. For instance, one resident submitted a claim, he's a little advanced of some of the rest of us, for $20,000. Sentinel Insurance, which is the insurance company for JNT, offered him $3,000.
And I have a little personal knowledge on her specific property because I was a Realtor involved, and we, myself, we were all collectively amazed that the age of the house in Old Stone Foundation, it was dry as a bone, and it was always dry as a bone until this work took place. And so, I mean-
And now I have water literally flowing in my basement.
So-
So, the other resident that asked for the $20,000 and got the offer of three, did his basement get fixed?
No.
Nobody said repair.
No. No one has had any repair work.
So, the $20,000 request was an estimate of what he thought was going to take-
An official estimate that he received.
From a contractor.
Mm-hmm. And that was then by Joe Grimmy, is his attorney. He's gone out on his own with, some of us individually have done that because we were getting nowhere with the Water District. They kept just saying, "It's not our fault, not our fault, nuh-uh, we didn't do it, not our problem." Almost literally. So, he's a little bit farther than myself or another resident, as well as the HOA. I'm also getting legal consult for the HOA as an entity. And I just spoke with, excuse me, this resident a couple of days ago, and his attorney, Mr. Grimmy, is now trying to negotiate what that settlement might be. My particular attorney finds them recalcitrant and very immobile.
So, I wish there was an answer. I mean, because they, obviously, five homeowners were agreed by something they didn't choose to do, and everybody's pointing their finger at somebody else.
Well, and the critical part is getting the walls sealed up and-
That's right, because it's been, it's almost a year now, and every time it rains, we have subsequent further damage in our home. All of us to one degree or another.
Well, as Ron said, we'll try to stay on top of the information as we're notified or continue conversations with the Water District to encourage them to do something, but a lot of it's out of our hands. But if the HOA can continue to, you know, whatever we can do to help, but it is, you know, the responsibility of the Water District, so that's the bottom line of it. But I would think they would want to try to get it-
And what kind of leverage could you as the mayor, or you as the council, or city attorney, something? I mean, I, we all, not just me, I'm here speaking because I'm the president, so I get to do this, we can't believe that there just isn't anything to be done for us. I mean, as it stands now, we're going to be getting, I'm sure, less than half offered of our homes, and none of us really have that money to make up for it. The only one that might even get some money from his homeowners association is the elderly gentleman who lives on the very end, right by the tower, because he actually had structural damage from when they were digging. No one else, other than some small cosmetic, has had actual structural damage to the foundation. None of our, we all looked into it, none of our homeowners' insurance companies are covering us because it's water damage, regardless of how it happened.
Did the excavation company give any indication that they'd just come in and fix it? That's going to be the cheapest answer for them.
No, but all of our attorneys, including the HOA one that I just spoke to, said, "No, they're incompetent, do not allow them to fix your house." Just so you know, their official, from their inspectors, who came and spent a full eight, nine hours on Pearson Street going, you know, homeowner to homeowner, we had to coordinate that with everybody working and everything. And they, very nice gentlemen, seemed very professional and knowledgeable, but somehow, whatever they, in their analysis, came back to us that the reason that we had water damage, all of us on the same day, in the same way, was not to their detriment or fault, was because, quote, "The homes were built with poor workmanship." That's a direct quote.
Is the project complete?
No. No, there's still lots of work going on.
No, the water, the water main project is-
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes.
Yes. Although, they've been up there recently, they said something about sewage, they're going to do some kind of sewage redo. They were up there about two weeks ago and put in a new kind of yellow, you probably know what it is, yellow top, they had to change something out and then do another thing. They were there about half a day, they didn't disturb anything, so. In that little bump-out island, kind of at the end of the street, it was in there. We didn't know anything about it until I walked out to walk my dog and I saw these trucks and they were blocking the street and-
Yeah, but the water main portion is completed and-
The water part. Who would be doing this sewer stuff?
That'd be SD1. That project's an SD1 project.
Oh, okay.
Is that going to disturb the same area that the Water District did? Do you think they're threatened by that project as well?
No.
Okay. Any other suggestions?
Well, what do you think of our suggestion?
I don't know that there's a mechanism that we could follow where-
We have some time to come up with, an ordinance.
You know, the problem is, it is public dollars, right?
Well, it varies from home to home. The one gentleman that I just mentioned that submitted for 20 and they said three, and, you know, he's hoping it to come in around 12 or so, so that would be probably the most extreme. It looks like what they're going to do with me is we've submitted a $12,000, and that's not even my whole basement, that's just the part that they messed up, you know. They gave me the same three, $3,000 also, and I said, "No," flat out, no.
I'm worried that contract didn't work.
And then other people had more minimal damage, but, you know, clearly, they don't want to assume the whole amount.
That's why I said, question about whether the project was complete, because Water District would have held back money until it goes through a process and completed. Those contractors are required to be bonded, so if there are problems that they don't pay for-
Right.
You know, they-
And that's a great point. In the Water District, when I spoke to them before I was president, just calling and getting on their case as a homeowner, they did mention that. They said that was why they weren't liable in any way, because they only contract with someone that is bondable and has an insurance company and can absorb that sort of thing. But they took no action at all, they never mentioned your idea, which seems great, like maybe they withhold payment. Another thing that we have not been able to do is that when I would go out and talk to them because of these trenches, huge trenches, in this, in between the individual homes, and they were left open, they kept saying, "Well, the reason they're open is it needs to be inspected before we can put the dirt back on," or what, which is what they said, it's not what they should have done, I found out from expert testimony and analysis. But it wasn't until Ron called, because he had checked up with me, did they ever come out and put that back, and I said, "No, it's still open." This is months now, months. And he said, "I'm going to call them again." He did, they came out the very next day, and all they did was take whatever dirt was lying around in the side yards. I found out later, it was totally wrong technique, wrong practice, erroneous incompetent practice, and threw it all on top. So, I'm wondering, was it ever inspected? They said they couldn't do that until it was inspected. I'm not saying it wasn't, but I'm saying, I didn't know about it, the then-president of the HOA didn't know anything about it, and I would assume that would be a record somewhere, that it was inspected, but it's a dubious inspection at best. It's another question we have. And then there's the landscaping, which is the HOA's involvement, because that's our common ground that we own, that was totally ruined and messed up.
Okay. Well, thanks for filling us in on the information. We'll see if there's something that the city can do as far as helping out or making contact with the Water District or whatever we need to do to try to help you out any way we can.
And when, when can we expect that we might hear something?
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday?
Yeah. Oh, wait a minute, that's Christmas. Sorry. I don't know. With Christmas, it might be a little tough, but we'll see what we can find out.
Would you be willing to meet with the, all of us, the HOA?
I can't this week.
No, I don't meet this week, but sometime in the near future.
At some point in the future, if you have more information or something, sure, I'd be happy to meet with you. I think Ron's met with you before as well, so-
Right.
You know, if there's something we can help.
We'd just like to see at this point a really, as I said, robust, vigorous action plan.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Ron, excuse me, have you, I guess, have you personally contacted Ron at the Water District?
I've not talked to Ron directly, but I've talked with Amy Kramer and I've talked with Alex Mattingly, who's their in-house counsel.
I mean, it'd be, I think it'd be a good idea to get some written response from them about the steps they're taking or they don't think they can take, whatever it is. And rather have a meeting, let's find out what the status of this-
That'd be fine.
-thing is, and, you know, just send an email to let us know.
Sure.
And then, you know, once you find out exactly where they are, then maybe give them up some ideas.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Would anyone else like to address counsel? I would like to make an announcement. We mentioned at the last meeting that our, the planning process that we went through won an award from the Cincinnati Design Awards, and it's pretty cool. And that was really neat. I think there was articles about that. Did you do something about that? That's awesome. So, there's a picture of it now, everybody can see it. I was going to put it right here and hide behind it too long, you can't see me. But anyway, it's a neat award where, you know, the city was so, so grateful for all the residents' involvement in this process, and we did, you know, we did some neat stuff, and we're excited about, we're working on all this stuff now and keeping it moving, which is exciting to me, because I hate, I hate reports that end up on the shelf somewhere. Anyway, okay. We are down to reports of officers. Fire Department monthly report, Chief Bailey.
Mr. Mayor, I'm the counsel, I really don't have anything to add to the November month report that we mailed out to you, but if you have any questions, it's yourself or council members may have.
All right. Any questions, President Chief? Entertained a motion?
Moved to receiving file.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Mr. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Beazel.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
He said aye.
Oh, Mr. Blau, sorry, I didn't hear him.
Ooh, I did have a question.
Yes, sir.
The one picture in there, where it looks like they're saw cutting the roof, is that the-
That's one of the-
Yeah, were they doing it for practice or were they trying to take something out? No, just practicing.
I was going to say, we contacted the gentleman, I think it was the charge, to bring him down. I talked to Mr. Christian Hill and-
That's cool.
He said, you know, give you a week, you guys can go up and make the TV one up too, but if you can go up and do things that we don't normally get to do in training.
Yeah.
We actually got to open and-
I thought you were trying to lift the pizza oven out or something.
In professional terms, we did some skills on the buildings and utilized some equipment, and that's what they were doing, just saw cutting. Since those type of roofs are predominant in the city, we don't obviously get a chance to-
Practice.
-train on them, so we did that just for some more practice, but yeah, it was fun.
That's great.
Guys could enjoy it.
All right, thanks. All right, Police Department monthly report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Very brief report or add-on. And November and December is a very busy but fun time for the Police Department, and it's unusual to get to say police and fun in the same sentence, so it's going to start with the fun stuff. We just had Cops and Kids, if you're not familiar with that, the Fraternal, Campbell County Fraternal Order of Police, they raise money throughout the year. This year was a great year, we provided breakfast and lunch and $300 per child for a shopping spree, with 65 kids that participated. So, we got to take them shopping, we went back to have lunch with the kids, we had volunteers wrap all the gifts or everything they bought, from clothes to toys, so that way they go home with a lot of presents to open up throughout the holiday season. In the front of our monthly report, you may see the School Resource Officer Zach Roffler with a student from Woodfield Elementary. That was the Ride with Officer to School Day. Throughout the year, we give coupons to the schools for good behavior, they can hand them out. Basically, it just gives us a chance to pick up a student at their house, let them play with the lights and sirens, wake their neighbors up in the morning, and then we drive them to school, and it's just, it's a lot of fun for the officers and the students involved. The not-so fun stuff, tis the season, we've been having a lot of thefts, burglaries, you may have seen in the media. The good news is, we just made a large arrest in the package theft area. We had a very observant citizen in the Gettysburg apartment area. We had a lot of reports of package thefts. He called and stated that he has seen a suspicious vehicle in the area several times. Well, his call actually worked out very well. Two of our officers, Officer Vance and Officer Rickenbach, they located a suspicious vehicle, and this is no exaggeration, from the front of the vehicle to the back of the vehicle was full of packages.
Wow.
They recovered $2,867 worth of stolen items. It's an ongoing investigation, but we believe at this point, from the time this person started stealing to the time they were arrested, it was almost $4,000 worth of merchandise that was taken.
Oh, my gosh.
So, we'd like to congratulate that citizen or give him an award for recognition here in the future for calling about that situation. Other than that, if you don't have any questions?
On that topic, it amazes me that these, I've gotten a few Amazon deliveries where I'm actually home, they put them on the porch, they don't even attempt to ring the bell or knock or anything. They put them on the porch and they go. There should be some attempt to, you know, say, "Hey, delivering something."
I agree, I wish they would.
But they don't, and so there's not a lot we can do about that.
We used to tell people to try to be home when you have your packages, or at least have a neighbor home, and it's like you said, we don't even know they're delivering, or they don't know they're delivering.
Yeah, but they make no attempt whatsoever when they are delivering, they just put it there and they take a picture of it and they go.
That's it.
They do, Amazon does give you an option to pick a day to have it delivered. I know a couple of times, if I'm going to be out of town, I used to leave things in the cart because I didn't want to buy it. Well, then I started, I realized I could pick the date, have it delivered, and it wouldn't come before then, knowing that I was going to be home. Still, if I'm not home during the day, it's the same issue, but I didn't want it to sit there for days.
Right. It's crazy. One other question, was there a special campaign on cracking down on speeders? There's like 26 as opposed to six last year, 142 violations total as opposed to 53.
Did you get stopped, Ken?
No. I just thought that was a pretty, pretty good spike, and I didn't know it was due to a safety campaign that was being implemented in the-
This year, we started a traffic officer position. So, our third shift officers, we actually had some extra, not extra officers, but have your shift on third shift, and to reward those officers and give them a chance to actually come to day shift and live a normal life a little while. We actually had a traffic position. So, any complaints, we had certain areas of the city, we were able to focus on those areas. That officer's sole job was to focus on traffic. It worked out very well, we're hoping to start it back up in January, February.
Good.
What happens if those Amazon packages, can they be delivered then, or do you have to hold them to that?
Good news is, because of holidays, the prosecutor allows to return them.
Yeah.
So, it's been, the last three or four days, these four officers, it's been nonstop, just people come to see, pick up packages. It's a good thing, but we're returning them all and trying to figure out. A lot of them, the receipts with the mailing label ripped off, so we're, we sent alerts out to the citizens in the area, and they're calling us saying, "Hey, if this is in the package, it's mine." So, we're able, we're probably 75% of them are going to be returned. We're going to get them all returned by the end of this week.
That's good. Any other questions? Entertained a motion?
Moved to receiving file.
Seconds. Republic, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Mr. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Beazel.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Blau.
Aye. All right, City Administrator's report.
Okay, I have a couple of items to cover. The first item is the Public Works Committee of Counsel met last Wednesday to perform the annual street inspection of the streets that were resurfaced. So, we were able to get out on those streets and visit with any residents that had questions or concerns. We did encounter three residents on, they were all on Sherman Avenue, actually. One had a regular surface finish that was directed to the contractor, and the other two had issues with their downspouts and the terminating point at the curb, so those are items that we'll be working with the contractor and the city crew to make good on those. And that really were the only issues remaining on the program, so staff will be moving forward with the apportionment ordinance that you'll see in January. And then we'll be asking the Public Works Committee to meet in January to formulate our 2020 plan. The next item is the Community Plan Implementation Committee meetings, I think the mayor referenced. We're asking counsel, and I think from response, it looks like Tuesday, January the 7th, will be a meeting date in January, so we'll defer our meeting from the 21st regular meeting to the January 7th date, which is a Tuesday.
We're not the 1st, the 6th.
Correct. I think the- Correct. I think the 7th works for everybody. So.
It's Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Yeah.
Correct.
There was signs on my calendar, uh, there must have been. Month on the schedule.
So, so Tuesday, January 7th. At that time, we'll hear from Chris Manning and myself, updating counsel and the, and the community on our implementation phase of our community plan. We've made much progress over the last year, and we're excited to be able to share that. I know that most of council have been involved in committee meetings through the last year. We're going to summarize all those things and kind of pivot point to where that's taking us in our, in our direction for 2020. So, visually, we'll, we'll capture all that and present it to council at that meeting. So, that, that'll be the main agenda item. Just an update, we have had recent contact regarding the Stables Building in Tower Park. We've had conversations with the US Army and the US Army Corps of Engineers, who have responsibility for that building. They have, and I won't get into all the acronyms because I don't even understand them all still, but they have basically authorized assessment for remediation of environmental that's required before they can, as we know from the Alexander Circle homes, before they can transfer properties. And they've authorized a current appraisal for the property. So, we're getting closer to the idea that, that they could offer that to the city. So, hopefully, we have more information. We can update it early next year regarding that, that particular property.
Is the appraisal we had prior to the roof improvements and so on dead in the water, I guess? That's the, you can't go on that appraisal.
They've authorized a new appraisal.
Okay. That's too bad.
So, yeah.
That is too bad.
Do they accept funds for that, or do they need proper?
They are interested in, and the conversations that we've had to date is, they, they are interested in duplicating the space. So, the concept is to basically trade spaces. So, in lieu of any value to the building, we would basically duplicate it to some specification for a square foot building that would match what they have for consideration for the building itself. And then, associated with that would be potential land swap that would position the new building and the area around the building at a location that allows the city to have that building and its surrounding area. So.
So, it'd be great if we could provide space that they're actually utilizing in that building because it's virtually empty.
Well, I wouldn't say it's virtually empty, but it certainly, I think it would equate to kind of that storage unit that you put stuff you think you're gonna want, and then you never touch it.
Yeah.
So. So, again, I think it's active, so we'll hear more about that early next year. We're kind of pushing that conversation a little bit. But they are being responsive, and we do expect they have some resolution of the idea of that come up in our next, hopefully, within the first quarter of next calendar year. Just a couple of other items, the Memorial Parkway work that we've referenced that was done. We had our first inclement weather, and we were checking it, you know, in the season, checking it twice. But the good news is, is there were no ice formations down there. So, it appears that the work that was done, at least to date, seems to be effective. Just a couple of other update things. I did not mention the last council meeting, but I wanted to mention, and thank yous to all the people that were involved in our Veterans Day celebration. You know, it's, it's something that we started. This is our third year, and it's grown. And for those that were in attendance, we had a great crowd for the day on a brisk day, which is typical for Veterans Day. But it's, it's certainly the right thing to do in a community like Fort Thomas, and I think we've done it well. With a lot of help from folks that have volunteered their time to make that happen, it's become a really valuable event for our community. So, we're really thankful for all the folks that were involved in that. And I'll, if I mention names, I'll forget some of the folks. So, they know who they are, and we know that they're out there, and we appreciate it. And then, the last item to update is, we are working on our website. We've met with two potential vendors, and we've had some difficulty, and Joe's been diligent in working with them. We actually have two more meetings this week. So, we were hopeful with the target to do something by the end of the year. And I think we'll have enough information that we could start to make a recommendation and choice on how we'll work toward updating our website. So. The good news on that is, the ones that we have talked to feel like the format that we have is manageable. It's just a matter of getting to it and doing update work, and then monitoring it with the updates that are put in place. So, that's all I had.
Well, I was looking forward to the announcement that we are gonna address the safety concerns of Water Works Road.
Mm-hmm.
If you want to go into any of that. I mean, it's, is it?
Yeah, actually, that's coming out of a report from Public Works, but that's the next item on the agenda, so we can go to that.
Oh, okay.
Unless you had other questions on anything else.
No, I'm, I'm, no. I'm just real happy to see that that, that seems to like a good solution that may be implemented.
So, moving on to committee reports, there's really no report from Law Labor License. The item on agenda came out at the last meeting is the Fairness Ordinance, which is on the agenda, and we can talk about that when it comes up. And the item that you're referencing, coming out of the Public Works Committee, the, I'll be reporting on the consideration of the street improvement policy that the other item, did we ever take that? We had an issue, if you'll recall, a number of months back from an individual on Water Works Road, and that would be the short section of Water Works between North Fort Thomas Avenue and Memorial Parkway. Regarding the speeding and the entrance off Memorial Parkway, the challenges that are in place with deceleration when you're going from a higher speed limit to a lower speed limit. So, we worked with CT consultants. We looked at a lot of different possibilities for potential changes at that intersection, from locating bump outs to one-way circulations, to a number of other items. And this is what is recommended. These are bollards that are basically fiberglass, and you've seen them in other locations. And the intention here is to create, you know, this geometry was read on in the early 2000s to create the 90-degree intersections that we see, not only at this intersection, but the one as you enter off of Memorial Parkway onto the other section of Water Works. The intention to slow traffic to create 90-degree movements, we're still having an issue here. The bollards are intentionally placed at the intersection within the city's right-of-way, not on the Memorial Parkway state right-of-way, in hope that people would honor that 90-degree turn, and thus, decelerating from the 35 mile an hour speed limit down to the 25 mile an hour speed limit. So, we're coming out of the recommendation of the Public Works Committee to implement this. So, staff will be moving forward with getting that in place with the new center line and the bollards that you see in the diagram.
I've got some Christmas wrapping paper tubes left over.
Damn, wow. We should put reflectors on them.
I, I've looked at, and I used to live back there, so many turns all the time, both the 40-degree improvements. And those things are coming out quite a way. I think that makes that a really difficult turn off Memorial Parkway. I mean.
It's the idea.
I'm saying, well, I mean, we don't want to make people's lives hard. If, oh, we want to slow traffic. That's all we want to do. And I would.
Just like any other.
I've had two thoughts. One is, those first two on there, I mean, I think they're gonna have the same effect without those two on there. People are much less likely to damage their cars if they get those. I don't, I mean, you know, we just had a report of people's houses being damaged because of some improvements that were being done. I mean, I just don't want to do that. I don't want somebody coming here and saying, I can hardly make that turn, and I hit that thing every time I turn. I'm afraid I'm gonna get it. It's one thing. The other thing is, you know, I don't know if it immediately needs to be permanent. You just put orange cones up there and see what happens. That may be interesting. I mean, you know, a survey, so to speak. I mean, those, you know.
That's why we have the professional engineers that came up with this, and I, I welcome slowing them down. You can't just whip in there as it has been. We've had so many people.
Don't disagree with slowing them down. But I've been in plenty of parking lots where I'm thinking, didn't this engineer ever drive anywhere before he designed this thing? You can't even move your car around? I mean, I, or turns. Those, there are turns, there are no left deliberate, no left turns when you go into parking lot entrances like that, where they want to prohibit a left turn. So, they curve it so you can't turn left, and they'll have a no-left turn sign up. That's a pretty severe curve right there. If, if, if you put those first two, you know, the, the ones that are closest to Memorial Parkway out there, I think, I think you would get the same effect. I mean, you've gotta get the effect by just.
You're suggesting the ones closest to the Parkway remain, and other ones go away?
No, the two, I, the two, I'd say at least the two closest be removed, because they'll see.
That would defeat the purpose. It would totally defeat. That's what would slow you down to make you do a deliberate turn. I, I'm not seeing the logic.
The, the curve is still there. It's just less severe. And that's one, two things that slow you down. One, you'll see it, that in and of itself will slow you down. The second is, you don't make that such a dangerous, difficult curve that, that somebody missed times a left turn and gets hit from somebody coming the other way on Memorial Parkway. Ron, what do you think, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I mean, I think we can have our engineer come out and field locate with us. I mean, the depiction, I understand what you're saying, and it comes all the way to the crosswalk in the depiction that we're showing here. I think there's, there's maybe a safe spot in there that still creates a 90-degree turn, but still pulls it back far enough to avoid some of what you're suggesting. So, we could certainly look at that. I mean, the issue we're having at this point in time is, obviously, we're gonna break into weather, do any type of center line striking and local. I can tell you what would happen with the temporary, though. The cones would end up off the street, because we've experienced that a number of times. I mean, it just.
You mean because of people hitting them?
They would hit them and drag them.
So, then these people will hit these. And so, that's what, therefore, my concern.
Well, I, I mean, I think, I think there's a potential that people would hit these, absolutely. But I, I know the cones are, they're lower profile, and they're not as reflective as what this is.
I mean, you can always remove those if we find out that it doesn't work, so I understand.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about, as I mentioned, we talked about different possibilities that are, and I don't know that we have it in this available diagram, but with the bump out. But this is a solution that doesn't require something that's permanent, that is maybe ineffective.
Because we have done that before. We put in traffic calming devices, absolutely didn't work. So, we wasted, gave a false sense of security, didn't accomplish the goal we wanted, and spent money on it. I, I just.
And that's why this one was chosen in the committee, because there were two other major ideas to use, and both of them required major construction work.
Yeah.
And this was an interim solution to say, let's see if this can work.
No, I mean, I'm not.
And whether we get out there and we see, because I, I agree with you completely about the engineered turns that, you know, well, to me, the great example was getting into Kroger down at Kroger Marketplace. That first turn when you come off of Memorial Parkway. They came back and they widened it.
Yeah.
Because it was the, the appropriate width. But when you're trying to turn in, you got a big SUV or something, so they had to widen it. So, I understand your point, and I think we can keep an eye on that, and if we need to remove one or two or whatever to make it, or if the, I believe the width of that opening, that road, is wide enough that this will work without creating the problem of engineering nightmare. I think it'll work. But if it doesn't, we can always take it out.
When I look at that picture, I mean, look at the difference between, you look at the first, whatever you call those things, bollard, and the curb, and, and the sightline distance that gives to you as opposed to that bollard and follow the, the walkway. I mean, that's like half the distance. You're just, you've just cut your turn distance by half. You could always add one later, couldn't you? You could always. Well, yeah, I'd really do that. Leave one short.
Are you concerned about coming out of Water Works on the Memorial, or into Water Works from?
Into Water Works, make a left turn. But I mean, you know, that, the visual on that to a driver is gonna be pretty awful, I think.
As it should be. I mean, I think you should deliberately.
People have to drive on these streets.
Turn left. I mean, you don't want to just cut across that lane. That keeps you in your lane, and it slows you down.
Was this designed by, or was this designed by CT here?
CT.
CT did design this, and they thought that coming that far wouldn't be a problem?
And again, the actual location of it has some variation, but depiction wise, they show it coming out to the point of the intersection.
Have we shared this with any of the residents yet who've been concerned and expressed concerns over time?
I, I get what you're saying, Roger. I do. I think it feels counterintuitive to make it skinnier and harder to, to maneuver around. But I think that's the way the traffic engineering trend is going, to kind of narrow things and make it tougher. Of course, we need to drive. I think you can still accomplish that there, but under the guise that, yes, you're gonna drive and make this turn, but you're gonna have to be a little bit more careful. And I, and I think that's kind of the thought process behind.
No, I mean, and, and I mean, it seems like a really good idea, generally speaking, but it's just like all these island traffic, you know, these islands they put in parking lots and stuff. It's like, aren't these engineers thinking about people have to actually go around these things and find a place to park and that kind of? I, I, I mean, I, I have that complaint a lot. They make these turns so tight into different parking lots that you end up hitting your, you know, wheel on a curb trying to make the turn. So, I just, I'd like them to take a relook at that.
We can work with our engineer on the actual placement of that.
And we might be able to even move it a little bit tighter to the line going out, since you're coming down to a stop, and give a little bit more room for the line coming out.
And this is just a picture. Yeah, it's actually, I mean, it's not.
It's an optical illusion.
But I think what we found with these other traffic calming devices is, there really aren't engineering standards. And people see things and think they'll work, or, you know, people have the impression. It's like, it's like people asking, well, put a stop sign in the middle of my, you know, my middle of the street to stop traffic. It's gonna make things more dangerous, because the drivers don't expect it. They won't see it, and they'll go through it, and the, and the pedestrian will think somebody's gonna see that, and all of a sudden, you make the, the risk of an accident worse.
I drove up Summit the other day, and I stopped in the middle, because there used to be a stop sign here 30 years ago. Anyway, you've got more to report.
We need more of that. Okay, so that's, that's a report on that issue. So, we'll be moving forward with placement of that. We'll certainly engage our engineer for final placement on that. I guess we have the next item.
Well, did you have anything else on Public Works?
No.
Okay.
It's a separate item.
Separate item. Okay, so we're, we have no old business down to new business. Consideration employee health plans.
Yes.
Another one for you.
You have a copy of the memo. We work with our, under our contracts with our employee groups. We work with our employee groups to come up with a, a recommendation for our insurance coverage. As you know, last year, we went to self-fund it. So, we've experienced really what equates to a three-quarter year exposure to that, because in your first quarter, most of your claims are still under your previous plan. So, we don't have a true sense, although all the indicators are very positive. It's accomplishing what we hoped, and that we are managing basically what our expected increases annually will be. And we're able to work with our employee groups toward any type of method that will save money in the plan, not only for the employees, but for the city. So, we're working with Cheryl Morgan, and, and you see a copy of the, the memo kind of outlines the numbers of where we've been. We think for our indicators, we are maintaining everything basically status quo for next year. Then, we'll have a good indication of where we are with expenditures, and we'll also have an opportunity to work with our groups to do any massaging of the planned program, so that we can, you know, and identify cost savings and implement them. And we're capable of doing that throughout the year. And that's, that's what's better about the self-funding mechanism. So, we're pretty pleased with the numbers. It does represent a 7.1% increase for the city and for the employees' contribution, which is in line with kind of where we've been, but those are based off of projected numbers. We actually have some early indications that our numbers actually next year will be better than the ones that we just experienced this year. So, that's probably a high-end estimate. So, we're expecting a better year than last year, actually. So, it really just comes in the form of recommendation from that committee, and it requires council's approval. If anybody had any questions on the insurance.
Entertained motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Beazel?
Aye.
Mr. Beazle.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Blau.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Consideration of street improvement policy.
So, you have a copy of the street improvement policy. The Public Works Committee of Councils have been working over the, really, the course of this year with several meetings. This is a topic with the idea that our program could be massaged or tweaked or revisited in total, and I think they've accomplished all those things in committee, kind of peeled back all the layers and opened it up, threw it on the table, and talked about all the what-ifs and what-for's. And what we've done is kind of crystallized the recommendation out of committee and placed it into an actual policy that restates some of the items that have traditionally been policy within the city so that it's all in one document because some of this information really has never been adopted as a formal policy per se, but it's been exercised as a practice in the city for a number of years. So, what staff has done is put all those things together. We've provided kind of a historic perspective, some explanation about where the revenue sources are for the program and the items that are covered under the program, and then talk about, and this was a lot of the conversation out of committee, the assessment policy. Essentially, the percentages that have been long-term use in the city, which is a 50-50 for local service roads and 60-40, property owners split with the city for certain streets identified in our comprehensive plan as arterial collector streets. Those numbers are unchanged, however. An important aspect of that, under the statute, it does provide for all costs associated with the program to be available for special assessments, and that's under Kentucky Revised Statute 92A. The recommendation that's been incorporated in this language is to take out everything that's a cost-related item to our street improvement program that is assessed except for the actual asphalt overlay, and if there's curb replacement, the cost of materials for the curb replacement. The items that have been removed are all the incidental costs, full-depth repair, spot curb repair, all the publication costs, all of the advertising costs, and the engineering cost for the program, which really equates to about, Joe, we went 9% to 13% over the last five years.
Exactly.
And that number's been increasing, so it's probably in the range of 10% to 12% on average at this point, actual reduction in cost to our residents under this program. So, the percentages haven't changed, but the methodology has changed for the types of cost items that are included. So, essentially, it's a 10% to 12% reduction for residents under their assessment process. The other item that would be considered, and this is an item that will, through recommendation from committee, be brought back to this council, is entertaining the possibility of recovering some of those costs through our franchise agreement with Duke Energy, and that'll be a specific study independent that'll talk about revenues that are generated from that. Does offer an opportunity to have more residents share in the cost for our capital programs for improvements of our street. So, that's an item that you'll see for a different conversation that would incorporate into the revenue stream for the municipal road aid fund. Another item in here that is a change, a lot of our conversation and input from our residents have to do with those excessive frontages and kind of the fairness of that in relation to the idea that when you have a corner lot or a larger frontage lot, the inequity in that, we don't have under the statutory scheme the ability to change that. But what this recommendation includes is a deferral for any property that's 150% over the average street frontage on their street in an assessment year. We'll have the opportunity to pay that over a two-year period without any type of.
Interest charge.
Interest rate, thank you, applied to that for a two-year period. So, it's some deference to the idea that they have a larger assessment, and it would be the equivalent as if they were assessed in successive years, not payable all in one year in one lump sum. Additionally, the policy just goes on to relate to the sidewalk and driveway for policy that's in place, so those items are all incorporated in here. So, staff is recommending that you approve this as a policy. It talks about the selection process and recognizes all the efforts that have traditionally been used to create our program and really puts them under an umbrella of one policy. Obviously, the Public Works Committee, from year to year, would continue to develop the program. It would just follow the standards that are applied within the policy to do so. Did know if anybody had any questions?
I'd like to say that it was interesting working on this project with Ken and Jeff and Ron and Mayor Haas. It was a good compromise considering that.
Step in the right direction.
So, it was a step in the right direction. I personally don't like paying the street fees as everybody else does it, and I, maybe one day we'll get there, but in order to maintain our roads and continue the policy, this was, sometimes you have to compromise even though you don't get what you want necessarily. Although, we could still do this, Ken. We still haven't voted yet. But to get to the right direction, I, sometimes you have to compromise even though you want more, and hopefully, we can eventually work it out, but this was, the no interest fee for the corner lots and be able to do more streets and spacing out the payments and more people paying was a good happy medium. Unfortunately, no one ever got it. Sometimes you get closer to that corner. That was this. That was fun to work on.
Ron, could you clarify real quick that on the franchise fee, I know in the Public Works Committee, we were talking about percentages. What we're adopting or considering tonight, there's not a number in there that we settled on. Could you explain kind of where we're on that?
Yes. The franchise fees that we negotiate are with Duke Energy, and they are independently done, they're outside of, you know, the pro forma for this per se. The only thing this language does is it earmarks any of that franchise monies, which we've always done already, into the municipal road aid budget. So, those fees are not collected and placed in the general fund. They're placed in the municipal road aid fund as a revenue source. So, that's the only commitment that this policy would create. So, anything that this council or any council in the future would negotiate through Duke Energy for gas, electric, for the franchise agreement, any fees collected and revenues created from that are independently done and would be entertained through agreement with them through a normal process.
Which doesn't happen in the spring, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, we could open that negotiation with them, and I think that's the intention, is go back and revisit what the franchise fee says and what revenues are created from it and how that might impact this budget.
All right. I entertain a motion.
Wait, is there more discussion, Roger?
I was just going to comment. I wondered, I don't know, and staff does great work. I mean, I think when people wonder why we've done what we've done, since apparently 19, what, 20?
1929.
29, 1929. I always wondered about that because I really am a big supporter of the way you've done this. I mean, I think that's probably had as much of an impact as anything if you think back, obviously, the schools. But I mean, of this community not getting run down like a lot of close suburban communities have gotten run down because we have a funding mechanism in place to maintain our streets and our infrastructure, and people invariably talk about how they see so many people walking in Fort Thomas. That's because we have a policy to have sidewalks, and then we maintain them in addition to that. And there's no free lunch, right? I mean, money has come from somewhere, so with this change, 10% to 12% is not going to be covered by assessments. I guess if you're splitting the cost, it means 6% to 7% if my math is right, less in streets will get done over time because we're not, hey, we don't have that revenue source. That's fine.
That's not what's happening. We're going to, I think the intention is to keep up with the same number of streets that we typically do.
The money's got to come from somewhere.
That's the franchise fees.
Okay, so the idea is you're going to make that up with an increased franchise, which again, is a little bit of a disconnect between the people getting the benefit and, you know, who's paying for it, but that's all right. I mean, it's not work.
We're really low in comparison on our, we're super low.
Yeah, we were on the lowest of anybody, I believe, in that group. Y'all thought about this a lot more. I mean, they are.
And going to your point, though, the utility franchise fees have always been designated to our municipal road aid fund in Fort Thomas, and that's really where we developed our sidewalk program, is when we first did franchise agreements with Cincinnati Bell and Duke Energy, which was, at the time, was synergy back in the early 80s. It was done so with the idea that they do work in our right-ofways, and they disturb our right-ofways, and for their right to use our right-ofways, that money is designated back into our street and sidewalk program.
Again, we're another great decision long time ago.
And so, those are related in terms of that as a revenue stream into our municipal road aid.
And a lot of those people that live on the state routes, you know, in the apartment buildings don't get assessed for the roads that they utilize a lot of the franchise fees. It spans it out a lot because, yeah, so it spans it out, so it makes more people involved and evens it out, and we still have, it's a good compromise. I think in the long run, we're actually going to do more roads, and as Ron was saying, I think a lot of our roads have real bad infrastructure, right?
Yeah, the relating it to a franchise fee secondarily makes your natural increase by percentages as usage goes up, but the second thing is, you know, we're finding that keeping up with our road program in a city of our tenure, if I would say it that way, our road bases are becoming more and more of an issue. We've had more rebuilds, I've been here for, I always say this, over 30 years, and we had like three. In the last five years, we've had three, and we know that there's more on our horizon that are already queued up, and there are, those expenses are not recovered through our assessment program, and so they have to be absorbed through a different revenue source other than the gasoline excise tax and the assessment. So, that's a more frequent occurrence that we expect with an aging infrastructure, and we're going to be able to account for that, so.
Well, I think having this all compiled in one spot is great for informing the public, and it was good to go through the review and consider it again, and I think that, I'm happy to hear there weren't that many changes because it's been around for over 100 years and, you know, we have pretty good information on, you know, that it's worked, so that's good.
Now, I entertain a motion. Move with approval. Is there a second?
Second.
We prefer the discussion. We'll call both of you.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Mr. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Beazle.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Blau.
Aye. All right, consideration addendum to Dryley, on Highland Development Agreement.
So, my apologies, you did receive a second, and I think it's posted in your information with the addendum. Let me see if I can find it.
It's separate.
It's separate?
Yeah. So, you have to go back to the, exit up here, the stage 28.
There, let me see.
That's the initial.
Where's my back arrow?
Oh. Oh, wait a minute. Well, I said that, but then I opened it, and it's not there.
Oh, there it is.
Did you send the entire thing in the second line?
No.
Oh, here it is.
Do agenda.
Do the agenda. That's it.
There you go. Thank you. Sorry. It's so hot off the press, it's burning my hand, so I apologize. Really, the issue at hand, when we did the development agreement for the project that we heard about earlier with Dryley, there were some dates involved in specifically the city's commitment financially to purchase the area for the parking lot was tied to a timeframe for the developer to secure their financing. They've been through the IRB process, they have a commitment for their financing, I think you heard Mr. Dryley mention that, but they haven't closed on it. They have their construction drawings that are near completion, they'll be filing for permits, so those things are related by timing. So, we intentionally did not allow for the city to make any obligation financially to the project until we were ensured that they were to a certain point in their effort to make the project work. They've done their due diligence, they are getting to that point. The deadline was December 30th, which is fast approaching, so the changes, the two changes that you see here would defer the city's purchase until the June 30th, 2020 date, and the date for them to finalize and close on their financing to be by March 15th of 2020. Those are both really favorable items to the city. This is not unusual when you put dates in an agreement like that. It's all dependent on the timing. In fact, when we did Alexander Circle, we did two extensions for similar reasons, just to get the project to the right point for everybody to hit those deadlines. So, it's two items in an addendum, and again, it would just be moving those two commitments to different dates in 2020.
Move with approval. Second. We'll call both, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Mr. Collier.
I'm going to abstain from this vote. I just can't reconcile voting for this, knowing that I voted no on the development agreement.
Okay. Mr. Beazle.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Blau.
I'm going to abstain as well, go the same way Mark does. I think it's, I like the project, I don't like the deal.
Just moving dates.
I don't like the project. I get it, Ken, I just don't think I should vote for something I voted no for originally. It's in that same contract, so I just don't think it's a good deal.
All right. Finance Committee reporting dispersments.
Report of dispersments, November 14th through December 13th, 2019. General Fund, $210,553.20. Tower Park Fund, $38,095.05. Public Works KDOT Fund, $9,423.18. Reoccurring Debt Service Fund, $1,140.88. CBD Revitalization, $20,623.23. Waste Fees, $95,722. Police and Fire Pension Fund, $1,896. Total, $377,454.46. We, the undersigned members of the Finance Committee, recommend that warrants numbered 6694 through 6839 be approved and the treasurer be authorized to issue checks for their payment. Mr. Peterman, chairperson, Mr. Beazle, member.
I entertain a motion.
Move with receiving file.
Second.
Second. Can we go over for just for one second? I'm just concerned about the vote we just had. Does it need to have a tie broken, or are those, is it in limbo now?
It wasn't a tie. It wasn't a tie.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay. Two abstains. Okay, we're good.
Yep.
It's a 3-0 vote, and extensions go with the majority.
Okay. We have a, yeah, we'll call.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Mr. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Beazle.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Blau.
Okay, we're down to ordinances, resolutions, and orders, ordinance 018, 2019, fairness ordinance.
This is a summary of ordinance 018, 2019, an ordinance creating a new chapter of the City of Fort Thomas Code of Ordinances to prohibit certain discriminatory practices within the city. This ordinance adopts a policy to promote fair treatment and equal opportunity for all persons regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, age, over the age of 40, disability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or familiar status. All claims filed with the city's fairness officer alleging discrimination in employment, public accommodations, housing, financial and credit transactions based on race, color, national origin, religion, age over 40, familial status, and disability shall be referred to the Kentucky Commission on Human Rights for investigation and enforcement in accordance with the Kentucky Civil Rights Act. The city shall reserve the resolution of all claims of discrimination based on sexual orientation or gender identity. Complaints may be filed, investigations conducted, conciliation attempted, and if necessary, hearings held.
I entertain a motion.
Just reading.
Although, just informational comment, I did, you know, review it based on all the discussion of committee meeting, other committee members could comment, but all the changes that were requested had been made, so.
Yes.
Yeah, since it didn't go to committee, I mean, I don't know. The board didn't want to know that.
Yeah, we were given this a few days ago.
Yeah, and all those things we talked about remain, it looked like to me.
Yeah. I did want to commend Councilman Peterman. He marked it up pretty good, spent.
I did wanna commend Councilman Peterman, he, he marked it up pretty good, spent a lot of time with it, and, um, I think we have a really good ordinance that, that we can be proud of, so thanks.
I have a question about the age part. Why would they, you would not discriminate against age, and then they put really, oh, before, does that matter? I mean, we're throwing an age in there, we, we discussed that, that, that's state law.
Yeah, I think it mimics what's already in place for discriminatory-type legislation in our, in our state, so.
If you're over forty, you're considered old, and you can't be discriminated against.
I hope not. I hope not.
I would have it worded the other way also, under forty, not that I'm there, but saying.
You wanna move into a senior home somewhere?
Uh, ordinance O nineteen, 2019, text amendment to add outdoor seating in the general commercial zone.
This is a summary of ordinance O nineteen, 2019, an ordinance amending the text of the official zoning ordinance of the City of Fort Thomas, Kentucky, to include outdoor seating as listed, as listed permitted use in a general commercial, commercial zoning district under Article ten, Zone Regulation, Section ten point twelve, General Commercial Zone, subsection A, uses permitted. The official zoning ordinance is hereby amended by adding outdoor seating as a permitted use in the general commercial zone.
All right, that is also first reading. Ordinance O twenty, 2019, to add, um, wow, I'm just reading.
This is a summary of ordinance O twenty, 2019, an ordinance amending the text of the official zoning ordinance of the City of Fort Thomas, Kentucky, be amended to add residential uses as regulated herein as permitted in a general commercial zoning district under Article ten, Zone Regulation, Section ten point twelve, General Commercial Zone, G C subsection A, uses permitted, and to include residential uses shall be restricted to floors other than the ground floor. Residential floor space shall not exceed a ratio of two to one of the other permitted uses in the structure. To Article ten, Zone Regulations, Section ten point one-two, sec, General Commercial Zone, G C section E, other developmental controls. The official zoning ordinance known is hereby amended by adding residential uses as a permitted use in the general commercial zone, and this use shall be restricted to floors other than the ground floor.
All right. Uh, ordinance O twenty-one.
This is a summary of ordinance O twenty-one, 2019, an ordinance accepting the recommendation of the Fort Thomas Planning Commission submitted in its resolution number Z O four, 2019, and amending the official zoning ordinance of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, being ordinance number O thirteen, 2012, by changing the zone or district of real estate herein after described from professional office to general commercial for fourteen North Grand Avenue. The zoning classification for the parcel of property located at fourteen North Grand Avenue is changed from professional office to general commercial.
All right, three executive orders. EO fourteen.
EO fourteen, 2019, an executive order appointing Rick Dottery as a captain for the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky Fire Department, and fixing his compensation for the 2019, 2020 fiscal year.
All right, no action prescribed on that. And EO fifteen.
EO fifteen, 2019, an executive order appointing Kyle Kaufman as a lieutenant for the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky Fire Department, and fixing his compensation for the 2019, 2020 fiscal year.
And one more, EO sixteen.
Executive Order EO sixteen, 2019, an executive order appointing Roger Peterman as the Board of Council representative to the Ohio, Kentucky, Indiana Council of Governments.
Are you okay with that?
He just found out.
All right, um.
Do we sign him up?
Yes, we should.
Yeah, yeah.
We have a couple of committee meetings coming up for January to hold some dates over.
Yes, um, I would just ask, uh, council to hold the twenty-first, which was our regular, uh, original scheduled meeting, um, for committees. I mentioned that we'll be reporting at your January seventh meeting about our implementation. On the heels of that, we're gonna have a number of, uh, requests for committee, and I think that date, since it's, since I know it's open on all your calendars, um, if you could hold that, um, we'll try to put some committees on for that evening, um, and get started.
You know, I'd like to make a request, too, maybe next month. I know that, um, next month becomes year end. Uh, is it February that you guys do your year-end review, or is that?
Work fiscal.
When is it?
Do you do it in March?
Do you do it in March? Could we set a separate, last year, we did all four on one day, didn't we?
No, we usually do two and two.
Oh, we do.
Yeah, we do them in successive months, usually in, usually they're in March and April or February.
Last time, I just felt like, uh, top of a, like a special council meeting, because it was on top of a normal council meeting, it was very long for the public. Not for me, I was fine.
Right.
All right, special meeting for those, maybe, or is it?
Yeah, we could, we could look at that possibility.
Just a thought, just a thought.
All right.
Are you gonna send a calendar in, or anything?
I will, I will, yes. And we'll, we'll be advertising that and everything, so we'll send it out to you all.
So that's a special meeting, then, right? So the agenda, it's limited to whatever.
Yes, for what we set the agenda for, yes.
For the twenty-first?